And we'll have the pledge. Oh, we have thirty seconds, sorry. We're gonna go ahead anyway. Um, so the pledge of allegiance will be by Councilman Sigala and Joshua Mateen from Pastor of Unchained Church will deliver our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Lord, we are so thankful to be here today and that we can come up to a pulpit and and just proclaim that you are God, your God over the United States, you are God over California, and you are God over Tulare. Your word says, Lord, blessed, fortunate is the nation whose God is you. And we thank you because we have a council that acknowledges that. And because of that, Lord, your word says that the blessings, the signs will follow those who believe in you. And that's the only hope that we have, that a city, a country, anywhere in the world is gonna be blessed if you are in the center. Father God, I ask you for every single business that is gonna be discussed here in this meeting. And I ask you that all the repercussions, the future, uh, all the the consequence that every single act from every single person here, let let us understand that every single act, every single vote, every single ballot, or whatever it is that they're gonna decide, it's gonna impact so many lives. Father, finally, I come to you right now with my brothers and sisters in this room to ask you for those unspoken requests that we ourselves, we have, that sometimes is not gonna be explicit here in this meeting. But every single one of us, we have a need, we have a special request that we have to you tonight. Let it be met tonight, oh, Lord, whatever it is, if it's a family matter, if it's a a personal matter, if something related to a sickness or any any situation. We are here today, Lord, pray, not because this is only an institu- an institutional thing or a ritual thing that we have to do at seven P M. before anything starts. No, we are here today and we give you the priority in this meeting because you are the one who can change lives. You are the one who can change our lives and you are the one who can do because your word says in you it's the want, the planning, the dreams, and the fulfillment of everything. Finally, oh, God, I ask you that you may come and bless every department, uh, that is here represented with their leaders and their authorities in Jesus mighty name. And I ask you, Lord, be here tonight. In Jesus mighty name, I pray, amen, amen. I ask forgiveness to you that I have a Bible study to conduct now. God bless.
No, thank you, thank you. Right now, we have a two proclamations. The first one will be for fire prevention month, and Councilman Harold will be presenting that proclamation.
It's always a pleasure to recognize anything to do with the fire department or the police department. So tonight I get to do the fire department. Proclamation, whereas the city of Tulare is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community. And whereas fires is serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at their greatest risk from fire, and whereas homes fire, home fires kill more than twenty-seven hundred people in the United States in twenty-twenty-two, according to the National Fire Protection Association. The fire departments in the United States respond to three, uh, three hundred and sixty thousand home fires. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half, and roughly three out of four five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. And whereas city of Tulare residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home, and ensure that their smoke alarms meet the needs of their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas city of Tulare first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrences of a home fires and home fire injuries throughout through the prevention and protection education. And whereas city of Tulare residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their home. Now, therefore, we, the city council, the city of Tulare, do hereby proclaim October twenty-twenty-four pri- fire prevention month in the city of Tulare and urge all Tulare residents to ensure their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts to the city of Tulare Friday apartment dated this fifteenth day of October twenty-twenty-four, signed by the mayor, the vice mayor, Councilman Sigala, myself, and Councilman Baderas.
Well, good evening. My name is Ryan Leonardo, Fire Marshal, City of Tulare, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. Uh, we appreciate it. Uh, thank you for taking the time and to recognize, uh, fire prevention efforts. Uh, we do appreciate the continued support and we want want to remind everyone, uh, the smoke alarms are very important. That's gonna be your first level of defense in your homes. Um, and this is gonna be something that's gonna give you enough notice to be able to safely evacuate. So with that being said, I do appreciate the council taking the time to recognize the, uh, fire prevention efforts that the city of Tulare Fire Department takes place. Thank you.
Councilman Baderas will now present a proclamation to, uh, the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, I don't have have to ask Donette to come forward because she knows the routine. Thank you, Donette. Freddie's here.
That's what he's made? You did not recognize?
No, I I apologize. Anyway, after I screwed that up, uh, this is, uh, Support Your Local Chamber of Commerce Day, and annually, the city council recognizes our Chamber of Commerce and the hard work that's been done. And we have a proclamation here that's, uh, whereas the Chamber of Commerce across America and the world strive to address communities top challenges and greatest opportunities through bold leadership and innovative problem solving. And whereas chambers of commerce foster strong, more vibrant communities by advocating to promote economic prosperity. Whereas Chamber of Commerce are champions of communities, serving as a trusted resource for businesses. Whereas chambers of commerce create catalyst community partnerships to build resilient economies and promote community-wide prosperity. Whereas the Tulare Chamber of Commerce in its hundred fortieth year, current year, uh, representing six hundred members and growing, correct? We're gonna have a, we're gonna talk, you're gonna talk about that. Whereas the Tulare Chamber of Commerce has made significant contributions to local communities by delivering innovative programs of economic and workforce development. Whereas the Tulare Chamber of Commerce is a recognized state leader in government affairs through its work to advocate for local businesses. Now, therefore, we, the city council, the city of Tulare, do hereby proclaim October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four as Support Your Local Chamber of Commerce Day in the city of Tulare and encourage Tulare residents to learn more about the Tulare Chamber of Commerce, its impact, its support, its local businesses, and its role as the champion for a thriving community and economy. And everyone, I I always view the Chamber of Commerce as everyone's organization, everyone's club. If you live in the city of Tulare, you should be a member of the Tulare Chamber of Commerce, whether you have a business or you are just a citizen who can join, uh, what what's what's it called when you're just?
Individual memberships.
I, my aunt told me she wants to join as an individual member, so I have another, I have two now that I, I'm building towards that. But here's our proclamation. Thank you, gentlemen, and again.
Thank you, councilmember Maderos, Mayor Sayer, Vice Mayor Isherwood, councilmembers Harold and Sigala. We appreciate the partnership with the city of Tulare, um, in all things chamber. You don't always find that in all of the communities, and we enjoy a great working relationship for economic and community development. And of course, we are at the cusp of something big as we prepare to launch the Tulare Business Innovation Zone. Very excited about the opportunity that's being given to us as we are entrusted with that new project and can't wait to talk some more about it in the upcoming meetings. Um, the Chamber of Commerce has been around. Again, this is our one hundred and fortieth year. Uh, we are a very strong organization, and we are gonna get even stronger as we continue to grow next month. And this kind of let the cat out of the bag. Jimmy is returning, so all of you turn off your phones now because you're gonna get those phone calls. And I actually should say, turn them up on high and say yes. As we all work together to grow the Chamber of Commerce and the work that we do, that's so important to our community. You know, we are involved in all types of initiatives. Tomorrow, I'm super excited to announce that we have our first Tulare Business and Education Committee event for the year for our high school freshmen. We have over three hundred and fifty high school freshmen. We needed fifty business partners to sign up. We ended up with eighty business partners who signed up, people who want to engage with our youth and to really encourage them as they make their journey through high school and hopefully make that journey back to Tulare, which I really feel is one of the reasons why all of us do what we do is so that we can create those opportunities for our kids to come back and stay in our community. We also want to mention that we have Business After Hours this week, which is super appropriate when you have the situation where it is Chamber of Commerce, you know, Support Day during the week. So I invite all of you to attend our Business After Hours Thursday evening at five-thirty to seven. We're gonna be at Valley Strong Credit Union, one of our, you know, considerable partners in the community. And we also want to say thank you to everyone for supporting Crush Party. Over five hundred and fifty people at C O S to benefit workforce initiatives through C O S and the Tulare Chamber of Commerce. It was a great evening, but it takes everybody to be a part of that. So we had a great time. We appreciate that support. And we also want to make sure, um, council and all of our stakeholders in tourism are aware that the twenty-twenty-four Tourism Summit is happening on the twenty-fourth. Those of you who've signed up for the membership event, we know you'll be at the membership event instead of that event, so that's okay. But I but I take opportunity to just give my report now. So Melissa, you can pull my yellow card and throw it away. And thank you so much again for the support of your Tulare Chamber. Okay, I'm done. I'm in.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I'll now talk about public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from acting on any matter not on the agenda. However, your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This is also the time for the public to comment on items listed under the consent calendar or to request an item from the consent calendar be pulled for discussion purposes. Comments related to public hearing and general business items will be heard at the time those items are discussed. In fairness to all who wish to speak, public comment is limited to a total of fifteen minutes, with each speaker allowed three minutes unless otherwise extended by council. Please begin your comments by stating your name and providing your city of residence. For those that wish to provide public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call five-five-nine-three-six-six-one-eight-four-nine. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty-second delay in broadcast for viewers. When calling in, mute the device used for viewing the meeting. I now have no yellow cards. Uh, is there anyone in the chambers that wishes to address council?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. Mike Cosenza with Clocia, I represent your largest bargaining unit. Um, and before you, uh, you have an item on your consent calendar for adoption. I want to thank you all for the hard work you did. I would like to especially thank Shauna and Josh and Mario Zamora for the really getting outside the box. This was, uh, especially different. We had a salary study that was involved with this. While we didn't always agree on the methodology, um, through our discussions, I think we, uh, we ended up with a pretty good contract and one that the employees are are pretty satisfied with. It was, it was contentious at times, but but we got there. And that's me on behalf of Clocia. Now I'm gonna turn my hat a little bit and be Mike from Hanford, California. During that process, um, there were some issues that were brought up. Um, one specifically was longevity. Longevity is very important to these employees. And during the process, when we proposed longevity, um, we were met with a brick wall. We were told that there is no way we were going to be afforded longevity in this process. And, you know, it kind of took the board back. And when I asked the question, you know, hey, why, why not longevity? I mean, that these employees have earned it. These, these are long-tenured employees that have all the institutional knowledge of the city. And because there's really no other avenue other than salary increases for them, free to retain those employees, longevity is the tool. That's the, that's what public agencies have. And the answer was to my face and in front of the employees because it breeds inefficiency, laziness, and complacency. And now I asked if the police and fire had it. He said, yes, but they're different. So in a time where we're trying to bring all the employees together and trying to make the city a better place, we have a wedge being driven into that process. And I I just believe that the employees are owed an apology. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to take an opportunity to address that since it was public, public comments.
Yes.
I do appreciate Mike and his efforts and all the employees' efforts, and I'm looking forward to when this agitum, this agenda item gets up for discussion. Hopefully, it gets pulled so we can talk about a little bit more. I have a slightly different viewpoint than what was shared, not dramatically different, but I want to clarify what the actual words were shared with. Because those words were the words that came out of my mouth. My comment was that absolute, it was not that absolutely would longevity not be considered. It was that I will not support longevity. I said very clearly that if the union felt strongly that you need to bring that in front of council for its consideration, they could do so, but that I would not support longevity. The second thing that I said was, pretty close to what Mike said. I said that I believe longevity breeds complacency, period. That was the statement. And I believe that, unfortunately, it does, in my opinion and in my experience. The fire department does not have longevity. The police department does. And the reason why I supported longevity for the police department, it's not just because they're special or they're different. Every department is special and different. Everyone has different challenges, unique challenges. The reason why is because the police department, unfortunately, not just this police department, police departments across this nation are the only departments that I'm knowledgeable of where there has been strong unilateral in special interest groups that have called for the defunding of police departments. I've not heard those same arguments for the defunding of the Public Works Department or the Fire Department or the Community Development Department. It has been for the police department. The second issue is my opinion. When I look at this organization in this community compared to others that I've been in and others across the nation, because that's one of the things city managers do. They look at those things and they study those things and they talk to other city managers. I think this police department, uh, has some unique challenges in this community compared to, let's say, the police department I just came from before I came to this organization. And so they are regularly in situations that are life-threatening situations. We have a police department that was not fully staffed in the last twenty years. And in my opinion, longevity, while I was not thrilled about having to offer that and recommending that to council, and council was the one who ultimately made the decision. I believed it was the right tool to address the issues that I just talked about. We've had challenges with recruitment. We've had challenges with retention across the entire department. Now, we have had challenges with recruitment in certain positions within the organization, but not entire departments, not entire classifications of positions. They've been one-off positions, which I believe will be fixed with the recommendation that's coming to you this evening for the salary adjustments. And we will see. And if it doesn't fix it, then we will have to go back and work at that. But I'm pretty confident that it will. I was pretty confident that longevity would be part of the piece that was going to address the issues that we were having in the police department. So my intention is not to offend anyone. My intention is to be, is to perform and be successful at the job that's in front of us. And that tool allowed our department to get fully staffed. It would be great in my mind if someday we wouldn't have to have longevity. What I have talked with the employees about are other similar programs like performance-based or merit-based programs. And we even can, and you'll see tonight when we talk about this issue, we've agreed to come back and start looking at other things like wellness of the employees. We're gonna be bringing to you in the future a health clinic program. We've looked, we're talking about looking at leave balances and accrual rates and all kinds of different parts and pieces. So we try to use a scalpel to address the issue that's So we try to use a scalpel to address the issue that's before us. And I would also say this last comment, which is there's a reason why we did a salary survey, and it was because this city manager was the one that said that's what needs to be done.
But we should, don't, I'm sorry, don't respond back and forth until you've had the opportunity to come up. And well, you'll have an opportunity when this comes up, and I think we probably should.
Deal with that right now.
When it's pulled as opposed to deal with it in public.
Be happy to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in council in chambers that wishes to address council during public comment? Melissa, is there anyone on the phone? All right, then I will close public comment this time. We'll go on to communications. Are there any communications?
No communication.
All right, council reports and items of interest, Councilman Harrell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll like to be certain attended the appreciation dinner for our people that work on our boards and commissions. I've got to compliment Melissa again and all of her helpers, the job that they did there. It was great, just like always. The eleventh attended the insurance meeting had to do with insurance rates. Twelfth tended to proud to wear pink function for the hospital foundation. And on the thirteenth tended the one hundred and fiftieth birthday of the first congregational church. Had a chance to sit down and spend some time talking to Pat Hillman about the history of the church and their efforts to get national recognition as a historical site. A little ahead of here now, on November the second, we will be dedicating the Leonard Long or Hospital, Leonard Long Memorial Intersection at Martin Luther King in Blackstone. This will be at ten AM on Saturday, and the family has asked that I extend the invitation to the entire council to be present and also join them at a luncheon that they'll be having at the Meisenheimer Building afterwards. No, November second.
Vice Mayor. All right, I also attended the Boards and Commission Appreciation Dinner, which was a very nice evening. On the fourth, I attended the Visalia Navigation Center grand opening. I attended last evening, we had the Civic Academy where Mario and I gave a really wonderful presentation to those people that were there. Also attended the Proud to Wear Pink event and the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the first congregational church. Councilman Maderas.
For the sake of time, I'll pass this.
Okay. There you go.
I also attended the luncheon, so I just want to thank all the boards and commissioners and committee members that serve the public on our behalf, on behalf of the residents. So I attended that event. That's it.
I'll now move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted in one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Do I have any consent items to be removed?
Madam Mayor. There's that we should move, remove seven point five.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Any others? Jose, no?
No, that was the one I was going to ask to be pulled, but if there are no other items, Madam Mayor, I would move to adopt the consent calendar. Items seven point one through seven point ten minus seven point five.
All right. Have a motion, do you have a second? Did I already say that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes five to zero. So we'll now pull item seven point five. Jose, did you want to start?
Yes, I had planned to or request to pull this item to take a moment to thank all of our employees and the associations that are listed this evening for us to adopt the negotiations. I know that, as mentioned by a previous speaker, it could be contentious. Sometimes it can be a little disappointing and they can be a little frustrating, I would imagine for both sides. I mean, I have the I have the unique opportunity to be an individual who negotiates contracts as well on behalf of members that I work for. So I understand sometimes going up against management and not necessarily seeing eye to eye on things. But at the end of the day, I think, you know, I appreciate the work that was done, not only on our behalf, our staff, but also Clocia. And and so I wanted to thank all the employees that work hard every day to make us us proud. You know, I as I I attend the annual employee appreciation luncheon that we have or breakfast luncheon. And, you know, I go around the tables and talk to employees and tell them that, you know, I've been on this council now for almost eight years, and I never really hear any complaints about our employees. And, you know, that's that's, you know, to their credit for working hard every single day, being out there, whether it's in inclement weather or whether it's in tough situations, but doing what needs to be done to run our city and our services. So I wanted to do that. But since the discussions come up about the longevity bonus, you know, I I'm definitely prepared to support what is before us. But I know that as council members, we also have the ability to kind of share our thoughts on a number of things. You know, I, for one, am supportive of longevity bonus, you know, not only to fire or police or fire anyone else, but to employees in general. I mean, I just finished negotiating a contract in Kings County where my blue collar employees got a longevity bonus the first time in decades. Because they have recognized the attrition rates and the competitive nature of the custodians and the road yard workers that are out there every day working hard. And so we were able, it was a win. We got a longevity bonus, and I know those are tough to get around Tulare County's necks on the on the list of trying to tackle that behemoth, of trying to get a longevity bonus for county employees. So I definitely am supportive of that effort. If they were an opportunity to have a discussion on that and have a vote, I definitely would do so. I know that it's kind of late in the game in terms of that. I mean, I think I would look at city attorney and from, I think I know the answer, but I think that the the answer would be if if there was enough council members to support a longevity bonus, would that be able to be still instilled into this contract?
It's my understanding that the Clocia has already approved the agreement by like seventy percent.
Right, I mean, I would imagine that they went.
So the answer is no.
I missed that. What percent?
I'll let Mike speak to that. I don't know.
I mean, well, before he gets up here and speaks, I just want to finish and conclude, so.
Just curious what the percent was.
Seventy percent.
Is seventy percent accurate?
Almost eighty nine percent.
Eighty nine percent.
And I would, I would imagine if longevity bonus was in there, probably would have been ninety nine percent.
Mike, you'll have your opportunity. I just wanted that figured. Go ahead.
Well, I'm almost done, but I, like I said, I mean, if, just for the record, you know, I want to let, you know, Clocia and others know that that I definitely would, if I could tonight, make the motion to add a two percent for ten years, I definitely would. You know, that's that's just my thought. I mean, that's what we got over in Kings County. I think that's a reasonable amount. But I definitely believe that that rewarding employees for their for their loyalty, for their experience, for their institutional knowledge is something that I definitely support. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Any one else? Yes, I, you can have a seat until we're ready for your line. I also have not negotiated labor contracts, but have been involved in the negotiation of contracts for forty five years as an attorney. And as Mr. Sagala knows, Zamora knows, excuse me, and Mr. Sagala knows, you can cherry pick any one particular item and say, we should have given them that. But when you have a salary survey that compares all different aspects of a contract and you have multiple concessions that you've given that have been have satisfied the salaries, the employees to the point where, what was the figure? Eighty nine percent have approved it. We did something right in what was offered to our employees. In any negotiation, I don't care whether it's a baseball negotiation or a football negotiation or an employee negotiation. When you get down to the nitty gritty, and in my field as an attorney, when you get down to to hard tax, when you're talking about different issues, things are said that people don't like, but that's part of a negotiation. And when you finally get to the point to where you have an agreement that's put together that satisfies employees who I have cherished since I got on this council and said they were the backbone of this community, and I still feel that they're the backbone of this community. You can take one particular item that upset you, but take a look at the balance of the contract, and that shouldn't upset you. And it didn't upset eighty nine percent of our employees. And and I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Sagala, that you would like to give this and you would like to give that. But there may be other communities that are doing things that we weren't prepared to do. And we, as a council, indicated that, as you know, we indicated as a council, and I never, without going into what was said in close session, we authorized our team to make offers that have been accepted. And I'm here tonight to approve this contract and tell our employees that we cherish what they do for us, and we've demonstrated that in the contract that we put together. I don't know why we're arguing about this. If you have a personal conflict, deal with it personally. But we need to move on and approve this contract.
Mark, did you have anything else?
I don't know if you need a presentation from Shawna, or I do have a couple of tables, I want a couple of graphs I wanted to show if council's open to seeing those graphs. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Melissa, would you bring those up, please? We're going to show you three graphs. The first graph is dated four nineteen twenty four. This is how we started. So when we did the salary survey, and the reason we did the salary survey from my perspective, and there may be others that disagree. But I felt very strongly, and our management team felt very strongly, it was time to do a salary survey. And we didn't do all the classifications. We have about one hundred and fifty across the organization. We did a sample, so we did about fifty. And it would be very difficult to do all one hundred and fifty classifications, because not every organization you compare to, we compared to eight other organizations, have every classification that we have. And so we felt it was a great tool to give us an idea of where we're at in the marketplace. And so what you see in this graph, it tells you that, right? So you have the 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 blue, the light bluish color, which is the Clocia group. You have the grayish color, which is the department heads, and then you have the dark blue or dark gray mid-management. Those are the three groups we're talking about today. And you can see, when you look at this chart, there's the the vertical line, and there's the below market, everything to the left of the line, and above market, everything to the right. And you can see most of our positions and these groups were at or below market, right? And some pretty far below market. And I was not surprised to see this. We've had, as I mentioned before, probably twelve classifications throughout all of the mid-management and Clocia that we've had difficulties recruiting and retaining employees. And so we assumed and thought it was probably because of the salary issue. And, you know, when I look back at the history of the city, I've only been here three years, but I go back and I look at the last twenty five years of raises, it's been pretty standard, two percent, three percent, four percent, five percent, one percent. And that approach hasn't been getting the deal done as this graph shows. So we had to figure out how to move the employees closer to the average. That's what the council's strategy and goal has been, as I have understood it, is to get our employees to the average of our eight other comparable cities. So if you can go to the next slide, please. Okay, this is where we end up today for classic tier employees. So we have every city organization, for the ease of discussion, has sort of two classes of employees under CalPERS, our retirement system. There's classic employees, employees that have been here, employed with under CalPERS with the city or in the CalPERS system for an extended period of time. And those employees that are referred to as Peppera employees, I'll show you that in a minute, those are the newer employees. I'm a Peppera employee, okay? Those who are in CalPERS for a newer period, a shorter period of time. And more recent hires. And so with the approval, if you approve tonight, this contract changes, this is what happens. All of those positions start moving to the right. Our goal is to get them to the average. Our classic tier employees, by and large, are now at or above average, not all, at or above, right? And that's thirty five percent of our employees are currently under the classic tier. Next slide, please. Sixty five percent of our employees are Peppera. Eventually, we'll be a hundred percent, all organizations will be a hundred percent Peppera employees, because those employees that are classic will leave the organization, they'll retire, so on and so forth. We're not quite there with the Peppera employees yet, but this, all these graphs are showing you is year one. We have a three year contract. So when you're, I'm going to give you one example, and it's all over the place. All the positions that were surveyed, like I said, some were overpaid, some were underpaid in the market. I'm just going to give you one, accountant. Accountant was determined to be twenty five point five percent outside of the average in the marketplace. So that was one of the positions that was further away from average. What we're giving that by the approval of this contract, the accountant position will receive a five point five percent salary adjustment retro to July first of this year. And then July first of next year, so less than twelve months away, will receive another five point five percent salary adjustment, so a total of eleven percent plus a three percent COLA for this year and a three percent COLA for next year. So seventeen percent in less than a twelve month period. It's extremely difficult, we have to live within our means. It's extremely difficult for us to take all of these employees and bring them up to market immediately. It didn't take us overnight to get them out of market, and we can't get them to market overnight, but we are doing a huge lift here. I'm very proud of that. I'm very excited about that fact. It's my intention and it's management's intention to try to move this bell curve into that average or above average range as relatively quick as we can. And I think we're pretty confident that we get there, you know, over the next three years, because you have to remember, like the accountant, seventeen percent in a twelve month period. But then next year after that, they receive another five and a half percent plus another three percent cost of living, and that compounds based on what they're going to receive now. So we're very excited about it. And to the taxpayers, I want to say to you, please understand, this is the lift that we needed to make. I know it sounds a lot when you're a private business and you say somebody's going to get twenty five percent over three years, that's a lot of money. It's true, it's a lot of money, but all we're doing is moving them to the average, right? That's what we're trying to do. That's how much ketchup we've had to do. So I I'm excited about this. I'm grateful for the negotiations. Mike and I might have a difference of opinion. I have my perspective. I didn't feel like we were any under any obligation to do a salary survey, but we did it with police first, and we fixed the problems there. We did it with fire next, and we fixed the problems there, and we're doing it now with Clocia, Department Ed and Mid Management. That was always my commitment when I came in, is we're going to do a salary survey and try to understand where we're at in the marketplace. The last comment I want to make is just a simple one. I want to thank Southern California Edison. You know, when we started this process, we didn't know how much money this was going to cost to do this. We didn't know if we'd be able to afford it. It's not Southern California Edison alone, but you may recall that we had a lengthy negotiation with them on a meter totalization project. It took us about two years to get there. They worked with us to total our meters to the point where we're going to be able to save through that process about six hundred thousand dollars per year. And it's some of those savings that we're going to be able to apply towards these salary increases, which again, to the council members' comment, our employees are our biggest asset, they're our most important asset, and we're able to use those dollars to try to recognize the hard work that they do and try to keep them in the organization and put us in a better position to recruit. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to address the issue? Mike?
I just wanted to respond to the to the comment, the salary survey was negotiated. It was an agreement we made three years ago, four years ago, whenever it was. And that ball had got rolling a long time ago. I agree, it needed to be done. That's why we talked about it, because we couldn't keep doing this two percent, three percent, when cost of living was eight percent, nine percent, right? You can't, you just keep falling further behind. I appreciate what the council's done, the hard work. Like I said, they really got creative, more creative than they ever have before when we talked about the the survey and the initial survey results were kind of this flat line. Here's what the what the consultant came back with. And and to talk about that process for just a minute, you know, I'm with Mr. Sagala, I also represent a unit in Kings County, and it's different. It's different negotiating there than it is here profoundly. I'm sure he could attest. And we're also getting longevity for our employees in that unit as well. They recognize the desire to keep a seasoned and and educated staff. The the process with the consultant was probably by far one of the most fluid and probably, well, I'll just say that we work better with them than we have with any of the other consultants. The the survey we did in Kings County was horrible. It's terrible. It's it's one of the worst I've ever seen, and they paid six hundred and forty three thousand dollars for it. And it's not even worth throwing in the trash, and we're going to be kind of stuck with it. With Shawna's efforts and with the consultants, we were kept apprised every step of the way. We got to meet with a consultant, we got to have input into it. It was a very us thing. us thing. It was not a one side or another. And this whole process has been an us thing. Um, I, I, I don't want to be misunderstood. We're not upset with the contract. The employees are extremely happy with the contract. I will make this one comment. There were, out of those probably eleven percent that voted no, we're gonna vote no because there was no longevity. If there was longevity in it, you would have had a hundred percent pass, absolutely. But because they were, I mean, they're, and those are the people that have been here for ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years that see the police getting it, see the city of Hanford getting it, see the city of Visalia Havit, see the city of Exeter getting it, see the city of Lindsay getting it, see in the county getting it in Kings County. Everybody around them, and they're doing their same jobs as getting it. So to say that that's not happening is just not true. Um,
Have you ever had a hundred percent anywhere?
I absolutely have.
Where?
In Hanford. When I represented the city of Hanford, I had a hundred and fifty over there, and we had a hundred percent several times. It's, it's, it happens. Um, but it, it doesn't happen without the discussions, right? And, and like Mr. Segalop said, they're contentious. Sometimes you say bad words. I say a lot of bad words. I get yelled at for it. But, you know, it's, it's not because I'm mad or upset, it's because they're passionate, and it's our job to represent the employees, you know, I don't make decisions. I make zero decisions when it comes to what goes on that contract. My job is to guide them and share my experiences and all the other contracts that I've done over the past almost thirty years to what I think is possible, right? These, these are the moving pieces. I tell them, you, and the first thing I tell them is you gotta get in their seat. You have to see it from their side. You have to understand what they have to deal with. Because you never want to send, but do something you know they can't do. It's a non-starter. And so with this process, with the, uh, survey, like the city manager said, we have a thirty-five sixty-five split on your retirees, right? So how do we fix that? The first, the first proposal was looking at it totally at classic. Of course, we're gonna respond with totally at Peppera, and then uh, Josh, uh, suggested, hey, let me go back and rework the numbers at sixty-five thirty-five. What does that come back with? And it came back with a more realistic approach, right? It wasn't a hundred percent. You're not gonna get every number right on the, every, you know, everybody in there. But it was more realistic, and the, and the employees appreciated the extra work that, that went into that. Um, the only issue, like I said, the only issue I had was the approach about the longevity and, and how it was issued toward the employees. But I appreciate all that you guys do. You guys have a hard job to do. I represent a hundred and some, almost two hundred people here. You guys represent the whole city. I get it. It's not an easy job. Our job's not easy, but we appreciate everything that you guys have done, and the employees do as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, I said anyone else. Who, whose voice was that I just heard?
Anyone else?
Yeah. Is there anyone else from the audience who wants to speak? But I think, is that, was that your voice that said Madam Mayor?
That was me.
Oh, yes.
So with that, we have it in front of us. I make the motion to adopt a memorandum of understanding with California League of California Employees Association for the period beginning July one, twenty twenty-four, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and authorize salary changes by approving the amended salary schedule for Clocia, miscellaneous mid-manager group and department head group.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Passes five to zero. Thank you. We'll move on, um, at this point, we will move on to, let me get to the next page. General Business. Comments related to general business items are limited to three minutes per speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes per item unless otherwise extended by council. For those that wish to provide public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call five five nine three six six one eight four nine. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty-second delay in broadcast for viewers. When calling in, mute the device used for viewing and meeting. So the first item is Rotary Club, uh, flagpole donation, I believe Ken is going to come up in.
Madam Mayor, Councilman, on behalf of the, oh, first of all, my name is Ken Espinoza, and I live here in Tulare. On behalf of the, uh, Tulare Noontime Rotary, we'd like to present a check in the amount of ten thousand dollars to go towards the, uh, new flagpole in Zuma Park. It's my pleasure to do that.
Thank you. So we would like to present with you with a certificate of recognition on behalf of the citizens of Tulare, uh, in recognition of the Tulare Rotary Club in honor of your donation of ten thousand dollars to the city of Tulare, which will assist with costs associated with the installation of new flagpoles at Zoma Park as part of the renovation project. Thank you for your generosity, presented this fifteenth day of October, twenty twenty-four, and signed by the entire council. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Now I make the motion.
So we still have the action of accepting the donation, correct?
Well, I was gonna make, I was gonna make the motion.
All right.
Is there any public comment concerning this donation from the Rotary Noon Rotary? If not, I will close public comment.
So Madam Mayor, I'd, uh, like to make the motion to accept the ten thousand dollar donation from the Tulare Rotary Club to assist with the costs associated with the installation of flagpoles as part of the city project at Zuma Park.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Now we'll move to eight point two, which is the workers' compensation carve-out program. And Shauna, are you gonna talk about that first?
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm pleased to present this item for you tonight regarding a proposed resolution approving the labor management workers' compensation alternative dispute resolution agreement between the city of Tulare and the Tulare Professional Firefighters Association, non-management and management units. And before we get into, uh, the details regarding an ADR program, just a little bit by way of background, the city has been working with Attorney John Ferrone, who is here with us tonight, uh, virtually, and Lynn Calavante of Ames, who is the city's third-party administrator for workers' compensation claims. We've been meeting together as a team to discuss this proposed, um, MOU with these groups. And, um, I will turn it over to, uh, Attorney John Ferrone to go over the details of what an ADR program is, what this MOU would do for our injured workers. And with that, I introduce to you Attorney John Ferrone.
Good evening, uh, council and Ms. Mayor. My name is John Ferrone with the Law Firm of Ferrone Law Group. Do you hear me all?
Yes.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you for having me virtually. I do appreciate this. I have to attend another conference in San Diego. Um, the concept that Shauna had mentioned, and thank you Shauna for all your work that you're doing, um, on this project. Um, the, the concept of an alternative dispute resolution program for workers' comp is not new. I launched the first ADR program for workers' compensation back in two thousand and eight with the city of Long Beach. And since that time, over thirty jurisdictions have embraced a change to the statutory system. And around you, Farmersville, Madera, Sanger, Bakersfield, Kingsburg, and Porterville have also embraced this change. And what we're trying to do here is compress the timeframes that injured firefighters face when going through the statutory system. And the, the difficulty they face is accessing medical care and resolving disputes. And these are the two dynamics that any employer and employee face today. And the length of time is so profoundly, um, uh, significant that cities and counties are exposed to what is called backfilling overtime. And really a disenchanted workforce that has to go through a system that doesn't really deliver. And so what the design is, is to compress these timeframes so that these injured firefighters who, who face significant risk can go through a medical treatment system faster. If there's a dispute, they can access a doctor to resolve that dispute faster. And the, and the goal really is to reduce litigation and save the city money. And in one city, um, Orange County Fire Authority, a thousand firefighters in the first year, there was one point five million in savings, as an example. And the goal here is to realize these dynamics that are occurring in the statutory system. And how do we fix that dynamic? And so that alternative dispute resolution that is creating, that is the kind of MOU, if you will, in front of you, is to do just that. It is to compress timeframes for the firefighters in the city to accessing medical care, accessing resolution of disputes, and really providing a fast-track system to go through and out the system so that these firefighters can do what they want to do, is that they want to get back to work. And so, um, the, the beauty of this agreement is it creates a joint labor management agreement. This quarterly, this group will meet quarterly and discuss the program and its, uh, issues. And they're more proactive in the solving these problems going forward. And so I've seen great success at it. I've been designing these now since two thousand and eight, and I've spent the last this thirty-plus years in the field of workers' comp and recognize that, you know, the cities and counties, the last thing they needed are more claims and, you know, uh, it's, the, the extent of backfill with overtime being, um, and amplified a, a better system. And this system really brings that to the city, um, a faster approach. Um, really, uh, moving cases from the inception of an injury to getting them back to work faster. And I think that that really has, has done its work, and all the cities around you have it. And nobody's gone back to the statutory system. So that's the good news, is that they've recognized that this current model is actually, uh, solving the problems that most cities and counties face. And it's a small step forward versus going to the legislature to try to fix, uh, everything there. You need a global look, and this makes our job a lot easier, solving the problems locally at your, at your level. Is there any questions that you have?
I'll open this for public comment. Is there anyone in the, uh, chambers that wants to address this issue with, uh, the lawyer? Any questions? Concerns? And I'll close with a comment. Any council members?
I have, uh, I've reviewed it. And I, just to begin with, I'm in support, and I don't know whether this should come from, uh, uh, Mario, or Shauna, or Mark, or you, but, uh, it looks like, uh, uh, and my experience when dealing with workman's comp is the problems that you've indicated are always issues that we have to deal with in my experience as an attorney. I, I was in general practice. But I, my, my question really is that this is kind of like a silo in the sense that we're only dealing in this action item with firefighters. And, uh, my broader question is, it seems like a great program that we should be using for, uh, our general employees, Clocia, our police department, and mid-manager, everybody involved with the city, it would seem like should be under the same program. And I'm wondering if somebody can tell me why not.
Shauna, you wanna take a shot at that first?
Sure, I can do that. This type of program is available to every classification of employees within the city. Um, in fact, the city of Farmersville does have this particular agreement with all bargaining units. Uh, we have started to initiate conversations, uh, with TPOU. At this point, we haven't concluded those conversations. Um, fire was ready and willing and voted approval for this MOU, so we wanted to go ahead and carry that forward for them at this time so that we can get this program moving.
Well, and also, what, why, what, we just concluded the Clocia contract. Would, did that come up during the Clocia contract? And if, why not? I mean, that would have been the time on the three-year, uh, contract to, to have included this.
I'll share my thoughts.
Okay.
Um, as, as you just witnessed, um, there was a lot to get done in the Clocia contract. And there were other items that did come up that we, we weren't ready to address, and I would classify this, in my opinion, as one of those items. This would not, I think in the police department and fire department, those two departments in particular, I would venture to say that it's a more pressing issue because you have more, not, not, I'm not saying no one in Public Works gets hurt, but they're, they're in a position where they're in a greater propensity for injury, I would say, police and fire. And, um, I think the fire department, um, so I don't mean to put words in their mouth, but they, they've been kind of chomping at the bit wanting to get to this because they, as I understand it, they want to see their, their, uh, fellow workers getting healed faster and back on the job more quickly, right? Because it affects overtime, it affects, it affects the entire organization. Um, we certainly support it, and, you know, we had hoped that we would be able to kind of bring others on board. I don't think we felt like we could get there with Clocia, not because there was this resistance. We didn't, we just felt like we had too many other issues to work through. We have been talking with TPOU, um, I, I-
Can we come, I saw, uh, the chief nodding his head while you were talking. Can you, can we have, can you expand on that?
Sure. Yeah, uh, Mark and Shauna are correct. Um, you know, the, the folks that, that I have in the fire service, they're, they're considered tactical athletes. Um, just like the police department, right? We have a very arduous job, and that's not to belabor anybody else that, that's not else in the city working. Um, but the injuries that they sustain are usually pretty substantial. Uh, and like an athlete in football or baseball, those athletes want to get back on the field as quick as possible. And this program's gonna allow these members kind of that fast track to get that care as quickly as they can get it, to get healthy, to get back on the playing field, to provide for our members. So th- this program is, is a good benefit for the firefighters, and I hope down the road that we can get some other members in the city involved in it to get everybody healthy. That's the ultimate goal, is healthy and health and safety of our, of our members.
So everybody's open for discussion, and that's gonna be something that we'll be dealing with.
Yeah, and our hope is, it would be great if we could have got everybody right away. But our hope is, is that we can move this program forward now and work through the bugs and get it working. And, 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 and once it's working, we can demonstrate, hey, this is working. And my hope is, is that, or our hope is, is that other departments will see that and they will be, because they, they're, I think, in a very similar situation. When folks go out on workman's comp, it, it disrupts everyone. It's hard for everyone, and especially the person who's injured. And so we, everybody wants to get back to work and, and have their coworkers back with them. So my hope is they will see that this is working effectively, and we will be able to bring them into the fold more quickly. I know that there is a, there is some sentiment among some employees, uh, not just necessarily in this organization, other organizations, that perhaps a carve-out program should be constructed such that if there is a saving, the employees should receive those savings, or those savings should go into some other fund to benefit the employees. And I know that could be a hang-up for some employees. My hope is we could get, if there's employees that have that concern, that we can move past that and put a program like this in place sooner than later. He, he consulted, indicated a potential savings. There's really no way to know what the savings are going to be. We don't, it's really hard, for example, to estimate having an employee come back sooner. They get injured when they're young and they're, early in their career, and they get fixed, so to speak, healed, and they come back recovered, and they come back sooner. How do you calculate all the savings that are related to that over, of a life of a career? And, you know, the, the other savings across the board for, you know, overtime, you know, really difficult to figure those things out. And so my hope is we can focus on wellness. Like by implementing a program like this, we're focused on getting our employees healed and recovered quickly and getting them back. That's the goal. Get the program in place, make sure that's working. The other issues are issues that, you know, we can deal with, like we just talked about, deploy salary and raises. We use a scalpel to address compensation, cost of living, lawyer, healthcare clinic. We're working on all those other components.
I'd also note that through the city's JPA for workers' compensation, we are in a self-insured layer, and so all of our funds are pooled. And so it's really hard to say what part of those funds are savings based upon the city of Tulare versus the other cities that participate in our pooled self-insured program.
Are there any other questions, comments? Are we ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt, uh, the, uh, resolution as indicated in the staff report for the alternate, uh, ADR, uh, agreement.
Hold a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. That passes five to zero.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yes.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you for having me.
All right, we'll move on to the next general business item, which is a pilot program for the community tool shed and bye-bye mattress program, so.
Staff is walking up, uh, please come forward. Uh, just excited to bring this program for you. This is a program that is being presented by staff. They brought this to management- They brought this to management based on the issues they see in the field and they deal with every day. Some of these issues are challenging and they started looking around at what other communities are doing and opportunities that exist. They brought it to management. Very innovative and creative. We're not, and it's not so innovative like we're the first in the world to do it. But it's innovative that the city's never done this before and not every city is. And they had to look across the nation or at least a part of this program. So please, I'm very excited to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. My name's Tiffany Connolly and this is Carlos Soto. We're a part of the Office of Safety Compliance and Facilities. We work with Manny Korea directly. Together, we operate Keeps Tulare Beautiful and Carlos also is the director of community maintenance or the supervisor. But this program, the first one that I want to share with you is the Community Tool Shed. This was a program that had been found by our code enforcement officer Gregory Wyret. You noticed it from San Antonio in Texas. They are the department that created this program. And the way the program works is they have a tool shed full of handheld. And battery powered tools that are available to the community to be borrowed when they need to maintain their properties. There's no cost and they have had great success with this program. It's something that we believe could easily be done here and could benefit our community. With the situation of California changing over to electric powered tools only. A lot of people can't afford this type of equipment, which makes it difficult for them to maintain their properties as we would like them to. So providing these tools would give them that benefit. Just between July and September, or July of twenty three to September of this year, code enforcement saw two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty five cases. Regarding the overgrown landscape. So by providing these tools, we could potentially alleviate some of the stress on the community and our code enforcement officers. We have done the work to ensure that. Our city attorney and risk management have approved the program. They've both gone through it and have made their suggestions and we've made those changes already and they both have signed off on this program. With this program, we could easily start at any time. It is a program that we would seek grant funding for so that this wouldn't be a cost to the city. We do have some grants already lined up that we would apply for and should have easy access to the funding. As far as making sure these tools are kept safe and that we would not lose them. We have already made plans as far as putting Apple air tags on them and coding them. And doing all the things necessary to keep track of our equipment. That is the gist of the Community Tool Shed. As far as bye bye mattress, this is a program.
Can we ask a question before you move on to the next? The grants, what's the source of the grants?
One of them is going to be Walmart. You can apply for that up to twenty five times a year for five thousand dollars. So it's, even if we got one, we'd be able to purchase three of everything we have on our list.
You you might check with the Air Pollution Control District also, San Joaquin Air Pollution Control. They have programs that deal. With this exact same thing that may be able to provide equipment under the circumstances if a presentation is made.
Home Depot has also volunteered to lend a hand if they. Yeah, I think Lowe's would be as well.
As far as the bye bye mattress, that is the other program that we wanted to present to you. We are the only community in the area that does not participate in this program. And with this one, we can actually receive up to fifteen dollars per unit that we collect. Which is money coming into the city versus us providing manpower to take these to the city or to the Visalia dump. And they collect the the recycle fee. So at this time, we're collecting, you said, about forty per month.
Yeah, about forty a month, depending on the, what we clean up. And that's just our department that, you know, Tricia's Department of Streets. They'd probably pick up more than, we have no idea. And so there might be more than that, maybe fifty, sixty. And our employees have to take them up to Visalia and takes two to unload those into their trailer there. It saves some money on employee time, fuel time, more on equipment.
Yes, and this program also will provide us funding up to ten thousand dollars to acquire equipment. That may be needed to collect these items to keep them stored properly. They provide us a fifty three foot trailer to store the units in. Until it's full and then they take it away. But that is both programs that we wanted to present to you.
I've seen this bye bye mattress program in at Penas in in Dinuba. And they've talked about how successful that is and eliminating the need to be picking them up. So are, will the residents then be responsible for bringing the mattresses to the location?
That is correct. We have discussed potentially if there were a need, if somebody called. Under certain circumstances, there may be someone who may not have the way to transport it. Maybe it's someone elderly or someone who's disabled. We would make accommodations as we see fit.
Would, I get a question. So if if this program were to move forward, would there be a way for like maybe a council member to. Sponsor a day where we can work on this. I can, I can see me, I can see putting dumpster on West. Over by the indoor swap meet and inviting people to come drop off their mattresses there and then taking them to the yard. Was that something that we could work on in the future or how do you guys see the logistics of that? Because I mean, I think, I think the issue is getting them to where they need to get to. That's the issue.
We were looking at more centralized locations. I know we had spoke about this in another meeting and won't address that right now, but.
Yeah, I mean, because I I'd love to be able to sponsor something like that in my dish, maybe next spring or something, you know.
Thousand that we would get potentially, we can maybe get another dump trailer or set up an area to where we're centralized. It's a bit and a lot more problematic on the west side, you know, with the dumping and stuff. So, you know, maybe something closer that will be able to set up a spot. We do have a couple of open lots over there.
Well, and I know for, this would be a great program because a real problem that we have out in the country. Is people load them up and if they had a place to take it in the city, it'd be much easier, but they load them up, take them out to the country. And and when they think nobody's looking, they just push them on to the side of the road or put them in an irrigation ditch out there. And it's a constant problem that our farmers and the county personnel have to deal with. So not only are we dealing with a program that helps in the city of Tulare, but it also helps people living out in the country or our farmers.
I forgot to open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public here in the council chambers that wants to address this as well? If not, I'll close public comment.
Madam Mayor, if I can have Melissa go back to the the one about the tool shed, the cost, I think there was a slide about that. Yeah, that one right there. So one of the things that that I'm working with staff on. And particularly Josh, Josh would be the one that's the key decision maker on this. Is I do have some ARPA funds that I need to help distribute or dedicate. And so I would be willing to do a five thousand dollar donation through or a contribution through the ARPA funds. If if Mr. Mordauer agrees that it is feasible, which I think it could be, to help get you guys going on the tool shed program. I know you guys are looking to partner with other folks, but I definitely could commit five thousand dollars to get you guys going.
Thank you very much.
So I'm crossing my fingers Josh will say yes, but we'll leave it up to him.
We'll, we'll look into it for sure. We'll bring it back on November fifth.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the. Recommendation. Adopt the recommendation made by staff as it relates to the two programs that have been presented this evening. Pilot program and the bye bye mattress.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? Then that passes five to zero. And thank you so much. I think it's a wonderful addition to our our services, to our citizens. All right, we'll move on to any future agenda items. There's been none submitted, so we'll go to staff reports. We'll start with Brian.
Yes, the library had an event this past Saturday. I believe it was called Spooktacular. It was a reading event. They had over three hundred people attend that event. Also, please follow the Recreation Parks Recreation Department on Facebook, social media, all that good stuff. A lot of programs happening right now, especially stuff around Halloween. And don't forget October twenty sixth. Concert. Get your tickets, Spade Entertainment. Be there. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Tricia?
Speaking of the concert, Streets has been busy, so we're doing some work tomorrow in front of the police department. And we're doing some work in the old Nielsen's parking lot. So if you come to City Hall, I apologize in advance. Parking's going to be a little bit harder tomorrow, but we should have PD done in the morning and then the other parking lot done by the end of Thursday. So we're getting things done. It looks really nice. So we're excited. Michael?
Can I ask Tricia a quick question? I won't take. I I've got a couple of places where trees are hanging over, like in one in particular, a stop sign. That's dangerous. Who should we?
Me. You can send it to me or Gonzalo. Yeah, and we'll go out there and.
Woodward and Oaks.
You can just text me though.
I will.
Real quick, I would like to also thank Mr. Espinoza and the Tulare Rotary Club for their donation. We're basically have two flagpoles at Zumwalt Park. They're going to be located on the east side of the recess seating area. About halfway between the stage and the back of the the recess seating area, the the bowl. And they're going to have LED lighting to illuminate them at night. It's just going to be a really nice touch added to the the facility. Just for your information, Tulare and Morrison Roundabout Project has finally gotten kicked off. It's anticipated it's going to take five months to finish construction. That puts us sometime in mid March. There'll be varying degrees of street closures and construction related impacts to traffic during that period, depending upon the phase of construction that they're in. We just urge the public to exercise caution and be patient during this time and look forward to project completion and all the benefits that project will bring. Also Morrison Street, there's construction going on. The section between Tulare Avenue and Prosperity related to the KCOK subdivision that's on the west side of Morrison Street. They are having to do some utility tie ins at the Seminole Avenue alignment that require the closure of Morrison Street. It's just going to take approximately a week to get those tie ins done. Then they're going to complete the connection of Seminole Avenue to Morrison Street. So they'll have a a route out and be able to close the section between Seminole up to Prosperity. For major street reconstruction associated with their project. So at least there'll be a way out through Seminole Avenue. And that's expected to take, let's see, I lost my point, place here. Extended closure of Morrison Street between Seminole and Prosperity will remain in effect until mid December. So just a reminder with development and improvement comes growth pains. Oh, finally, good news. I almost forgot this. The TCAG two thousand twenty four Local Emotion Awards Luncheon. Was held last October third and the city of Tulare was awarded an Outstanding Road Project Award. For our Pleasant Avenue Improvement Project. In particular, they noted the benefits provided to pedestrian, bicycle and vehicular traffic. Associated with the schools, Pleasant Avenue Elementary School and Tulare Western High School. So we got recognition for our project.
Thank you. Well deserved. Mark?
Nothing to report.
Josh?
I wanted to take just a moment to thank Mario, Shawna and Jason Bulling. For all of the efforts that they took with regard to the the contracts that you approved this evening. Represented hundreds of hours of staff work in getting to those points and just wanted to thank them personally for all the efforts they made.
Thank you. Tracy?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Mario?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Shawna?
Just a quick update, we are doing the recruitment for Community Services Director that will be closing in five days. And we also kicked off all of our recruiting for the twelve firefighters from the Safer Grant. That will be closing on October twenty three or October twenty third, so we're well on our way.
Chief Hott?
Twenty sixth of October before the first event in the morning, you can come out to the fire department for an open house. And a ribbon cutting for the brand new ladder truck, the brand new fire truck ladder truck that we have for the community and a pancake breakfast shortly to follow.
Yes, nice. Anything from the police department? I gotta turn it on.
Thank you. No new business. I would like to just acknowledge our personnel. In their efforts in community engagement activities recently, National Night Out a few weeks ago. And most recently, we participated in Relay for Life. And joining family members in honoring their loved ones who lost their battles with cancer. And also more importantly, helping celebrate those who who won their battles, the survivors of cancer. So you may have seen some of that on social media or been present personally, but our staff, you know, they volunteer their time. And and in addition to, so, yep, other than that, no new business worth mentioning.
Thank you so much. Mario?
Just that, you know, with the labor negotiations, we've heard it's a group effort, but I will tell you Josh and Shawna do the lion's share of that work. And they put in a lot of hours getting that done and getting those deals done. So you should thank them.
Yes, we appreciate that. Mark, did you have anything else?
I do really quick, if you'd pull up the Zumwalt Park. So just as Brian mentioned, we have a first concert next Saturday. Not this coming Saturday, but next Saturday night to twenty sixth. Just want to give you an idea of what's going to be happening around Zumwalt. And so Kern Avenue in front of City Hall will be closed off to vehicles. That will be the area where all the citizens or guests will be staging. As they enter into the park. You, again, the the park's not going to be finished. We know that, right? But the concert will go on. Folks are buying tickets to see a show. The show will go on. The work we anticipate having completed for the show is, we anticipate all of the concrete works, all the pathways installed. Starting next week, you will see a lot more folks out there, city staff, cutting down weeds, install, working with the contractor. Install mulch in all of the areas. It'll be playground quality mulch. So it's a little bit safer, doesn't really splinter and and create, what is the word I'm looking for, Brian? What is it? Slivers, whatever they call them, yeah. And then the bowl area will be sod. And so when folks come, they can lay a towel out, they can bring a small chair and sit in those areas. The bathrooms will not be finished, so you see on the right hand side, you see there'll be two different types of bathrooms. There'll be higher quality rental VIP type bathrooms and then there'll be also porta potties, very consistent with what you see at outdoor concerts. The, on the map, the green little symbol are food trucks. Those will be off of N Street. N Street will be fenced off, except for one travel lane for emergency vehicles. And then the magenta colored and bluish purple colored are the vehicles for the performers and production companies, et cetera. And so, you know, you'll see a lot of work out there to get ready for the show. They still have a lot more work to finish the park. They're going to sort of stop doing their work to finish, so these shows will go on. You'll know that there's, there's, there were originally four shows planned. One show has been canceled. Unfortunately, it'll be rescheduled next year. The lead singer for The Motels is having some health issues and so they're going to move that show. There were three bands for that show and there needs to be three bands and they're not able to perform and we can't get a band to come in that quickly. So we'll reschedule that event to next year. The operator Spade Entertainment has offered all of the attendees for that show. Free tickets to any of the other shows, plus their ticket will transfer to the show next year. There's a small smoking area as you see over there on the left hand side. And so, you know, I want you to remember, the the first few shows are not going to be perfect. You know, the park's not going to be finished. But the shows will go on and we'll learn a lot from the shows. We'll have a better idea on understanding how the production for these shows need to work. These first few shows are sort of our trial run. As we get ready for next year, we'll learn a lot about marketing, the markets, what are folks looking for in terms of types of performers, where to market them to, you know, so on and so forth. So there's a lot to learn. You saw in the, in one of the previous meetings, all the parking areas, we have some paid parking and we have a ton of free parking all around downtown, almost four thousand spaces. As Trish mentioned, we're in the process of cleaning up areas and fixing up areas. And so you know, I'm looking forward to it. Just keep in mind, as we go, we're going to learn a lot and we'll keep modifying and improving things as we go. Happy to answer any questions.
That's a Saturday night, right?
That's correct, the twenty sixth.
Thank you for that report. Any other questions? If there is nothing else, then this meeting is adjourned.